Okay, it's seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the village's new board meeting in order. Look for approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Item three, public appearance and citizen comments, items not listed on this agenda, items will not be debated or acted upon this meeting but will be referred to the proper staff or committee of action is required. And please keep your comments to three minutes. If there's anybody here. Amy, you're hiding back there.
Oh, I, yeah.
Okay, item four, approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, second.
I would ask Jeff, oh, why are we denying that tile ray? If you can say.
Yeah, no, my application was incomplete, he was an ass, he's got a bunch of other. Mr. Mayor charges.
Okay.
Other old W I that he doesn't want us to. At least second time in not third. Applied and.
Oh, okay.
Come off.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Item five, new business, uh, public hearing ordinance twenty-four dash eleven to amend chapter two ninety-eight, article seven of the municipal code of the village of New Glarus. Water utility impact fees. We need a motion to open up the public hearing.
I move to open up the public hearing.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
John, you wanna give your presentation now?
Yeah.
During this.
Presentation on this.
Do you want me to go down, or do you wanna?
Sure, I can drive.
Okay. Feel free to sit or stand or whatever.
Well, whatever. Yeah, I can't pass up, thank you chair.
Yeah.
Well, good evening, everybody, I'm John Cameron with Ellers, and we perform the update for the impact fee study that we'll talk about this evening. So, there. Oh, that's fine. What I'll do is, is just kinda start at a high level standpoint in terms of what impact fees are, so the village just had the water impact fee on the books for many years, goes back to two thousand and three, so this really is just an update of a fee that you've already got in place, and really the purpose of the update is now that you're getting ready to move forward with a water reservoir project, um, you've got, you know, actual or bid costs now, um, so it's a, it's a, you know, a good time to, to update it. Um, and, and have it be reflective of, of, you know, real, actual costs here. So, impact fees, if you're not familiar with them, they are a one-time fee imposed on new development, and they're, uh, the goal of an impact fee is to recover the proportionate share of the capital cost necessary to serve that new development, so when you think of, you know, a, a reservoir project, take project, and you think of, you know, we're sizing it for, uh, not only for today and the, the existing water demand that we have today, but proper planning suggests you should also, you know, oversize it for new growth and development, so, uh, that excess capacity that you're building into it and the cost for it, rather than recover that through your water rates, which is the normal way that you'll, you know, recover still a good majority of this project. Uh, but the growth share of the project you'll recover as new development comes into the village, pulls a, a building permit, um, that's the, the trigger point for, for when the impact fee is paid. Um, there's a whole lot of, uh, other eligible types of impact fees under state statute, there's also, uh, statute that lists ineligible expenses, and that's primarily vehicles, um, you know, operating related costs, again, the impact fees really are kinda strictly on the, on the capital side, you know, brick and mortar type, type facilities, so, uh, this is as good as you will see a municipal advisor gets in terms of actually demonstrating this graphically, um, just, you know, as somebody comes in and builds a new house, uh, expands a business, changes the nature of the business where, you know, in this big case, maybe you're going from uh, three quarters inch meter to a, to a two inch meter or something like that, where you really are expanding and, and potentially having an impact on, on the usage of the, of the water utility, um, you know, new development has obviously demands, um, municipal services, in this case, we're talking about the need for, for water-related type services, so, uh, at the issuance of the building permit is when that would be triggered, whether, you know, regardless, it's residential or non-residential in nature. Okay. The, you know, in terms of the kinda capital, you know, some frequently asked questions. When we look at impact fees in general, really, we're, we're, we're kind of zeroing in on projects you for sure know are going to happen, so this is obviously been a long time in the making, but it is now coming to fruition, um, you know, with, with impact fees, the other thing to keep in mind is, um, they do have to be used within eight years from the time of collection, so going forward, you're, you're gonna have, uh, long-term debt on this asset through the form of, uh, a USDA rule development loan, so really, on an annual basis, or if it's not annually, maybe every other year, but, but I think practically speaking, speaking, sweeping the account on an annual basis is, is a good idea, uh, you'll be using those impact fee revenues to help pay for a portion of the, the principal and interest payments on your USDA loan, so, uh, but you've gotta be able to show that you can, uh, say that those impact fees were spent uh, within an eight-year period of time, and that's relatively new legislatively, that, that came into being about five, six years ago. Uh, and then, how often should impact fees be, be updated? Longer than twenty years, um, but, you know, really every five, six years, just as conditions change, and, and some of the things to consider is, yeah, on this project, you know, if there are other projects that come in, you know, from a water system side, uh, that might be good candidates, uh, you know, well, those types of things where you'd say, okay, hey, or we're oversizing water mains for, for new growth and development, maybe those would be candidates to bring forward in the future to add to the impact fee. Okay, so.
Can I ask a question really quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so you're saying we haven't updated our, um, fees for twenty years?
Yeah, it's two thousand and three, when it's the last time it was updated.
Got it.
But really, you didn't have any.
Nude.
Yeah. Yeah, so you didn't have a, a real reason to, to come back and do it, because the project wasn't necessarily moving forward again at that time.
But.
In terms of the process, um, what's required is a public facilities needs assessment, and that's the actual, the big document, and we'll go through that tonight. Right, uh, if you're thinking of looking at your path, you go, oh my gosh. So, that's for your reading pleasure, if you have a hard time sleeping. Close the up to that thing, uh, but it, it is the document that has an inventory of your existing, you know, facilities, documents the, the, you know, the need for the project and the percentage related to new growth and development, um, and that, you know, needs assessment was, was performed by your, by your engineer, and then it was used, that document was then used to calculate and update the impact fee, um, the impact fee is, is based on, um, a, you know, per unit cost in terms of, uh, uh, five eighths or three quarters inch meter, and then we use your, um, the equivalency ratios from your, uh, water rate tariff for, uh, your general service charges to extrapolate that out to bigger meter sizes, so the bigger the meter size, the, you know, the larger the demand on the system, uh, the more they'll pay in, in impact fees. Okay, so in terms of, um, second side, I'm not sure why, it's not coming through, but from a background standpoint, like I said, the impact fee was originally enacted in two thousand and three, it was for the water, uh, the, the growth share of the water reservoir project, at that time, uh, the study identified seven hundred and thirty-one thousand of, uh, the, the total cost of the project as attributable to new growth and development, and then equated to an impact fee, um, for a five inch, five eighth inch meter, which is, you know, kind of a standard residential meter size of eight hundred and sixty dollars. So really, as I said earlier, we're really just coming in and updating that impact fee now that you're moving forward, so, uh, one of the statutory requirements is when you, when you do an impact fee study, you've also got to take into consideration other sources of revenue coming into the project, in this case, you've got a, a grant from the EPA for a million dollars, that helps possible so we've gotta take that into consideration, so we're not, you know, double counting in terms of, uh, collecting impact fees and, and the grant, so we really are looking at, you know, the eligible portion of the cost at about two point two million dollars out of the three point two million, and then from that, the, uh, needs assessment study identifies thirty-five percent of the project as, um, relatable to serving new growth in the village, so from a dollar, it's to, uh, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, so not much different than, you know, the two thousand and three studies, it shows you, you know, really, that was a sound analysis and, um, the village, you know, doing a great job in terms of managing the project and moving ahead with, uh, other dollars, uh, on hand, which is really fantastic in terms of grant money, that definitely does not come along very often, so. Um, so what this means for, uh, the difference meter sizes is for a five eighth and three quarters inch meter, uh, the fee will go from eight hundred and sixty dollars to, uh, one thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars, so a little over two hundred dollar increase, so it's, it's, you know, given that it's been a longer period of time, it's relatively minor in terms of the cost difference. And you can see the, um, cost per meet larger meter sizes, and again, it's based on the equivalency ratios that, uh, PSC uses for your, um, fixed meter charges in terms of your wa- existing water rate tariff. The other statutory requirement that we have to do when we do an impact fee study is calculate the effect that it has on a housing affordability, you know, so an impact fee, you come in, pull your building permit, build a new home, for example, that impact fee is the same regardless if the home is valued at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars or seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so, you know, this, the, the cheaper the home or cheaper the structure that is being built, the, the larger, you know, the, the proportionate share, uh, the impact fee has on overall housing affordability, it's not a, it's not a sliding scale based on the value of the home, that would be a tax. So, um, we looked at an affordable house in this case as the definition of, uh, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand, um, we looked at, you know, if you were putting roughly ten percent down, uh, how much if you added the impact fee on to the, the cost that you'd be financing, which is usually pretty standard, you know, as all your comes into your total building permits and costs that you're gonna ultimately finance with and without the, uh, uh, impact fee, it equates to about a, a six dollar, uh, a month difference in terms of your monthly mortgage payment. So, relatively minor difference overall. So, um, the action item that you have after you close the public hearing, uh, would be to, uh, update the ordinance, so the, the ordinance again has been in effect for a number of years, we've updated it to, uh, reflect the most current study as well as just some of the, the changes in the law that have taken place, which really is just a time period collection more than anything. Um, that is the action item on tonight's agenda.
You had made a comment earlier about an existing building, if we had to put a bigger line into the existing building, so like the New Glarus Hotel, it's gonna put in a sprinkler system, boy, I think we're gonna have to put a bigger line into that building. Is that?
Well, possibly, I, I think, if, again, if you did, you know, a situation like that where you're upsizing, um, you would be looking at the difference between the meter they'd be going to compared to the meter that they'd have, so you'd say, all right, you know, if they're going from, you know, let's say a one inch to a two inch meter, you'd be looking at the difference between eight thousand nine twenty-eight and two thousand seven hundred ninety as the, the potential impact fee, but there, if they're putting in just something for onsite sprinkling, if it's not changing the general service, you know, meter, then, then there may be no, no difference or no impact, so that's, that's certainly a possibility, but if say you had a, you know, vacant building that, uh, that, you know, was on a, a one inch meter, and now you've got a wet industry that's moving into town, and it necessitates a three inch meter, and you've gotta change, change that out, they would pay the difference between a one and a three inch meter in terms of impact fee.
Okay.
So recognizes what's, you know, what was there.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions on John? No. Okay, well, I guess we can, do we need to act on this during the public hearing?
You close it and then you act.
Okay, so we need a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing at seven fourteen.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
So now we need a motion to. Or repeat the water utility impact fees. Item eight, under new business, that's what we're.
I think they be, but.
Oh, okay, oh yeah, that's the public hearing, okay. So, we'll move down to B, consideration discussion ordinance twenty-four eleven to amend chapter two ninety-eight, article seven of the municipal code of the village of New Glarus, water utility impact fees.
I move to approve ordinance twenty-four eleven.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? There are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Yeah, take care, thanks.
Great job of explaining.
Yeah, you bet, thank you.
Okay, item C, consideration discussion, Ward Creek Arboretum, final plat, who, Cooley Road Parcels. Your numbers, and I ran these all off earlier. Two, three, zero, two, four, zero, one, seven, five, zero, 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 two, three, zero, two, four, zero, one, seven, five, zero, one, zero, zero, two, three, zero, two, four, zero, one, seven, five, zero, two, zero, zero. And Mr. Klarz is here answering questions, uh.
I also have additional copies of the final plat, if you'd like.
Uh, we brought before the E C Z committee tonight, and we approved it, as, as the town board and the town plan commission is also. So, any questions to Mr. Klarzly? No. Do you wanna make any comments?
Not really, it's pretty much identical, almost identical to the preliminary, the preliminary part that was approved.
The emotion.
Yeah, need a motion to.
We have to say all of them.
How about the. Yeah, just arboretum final plat.
Okay, so I'm motion to approve the. Lost one. Ward Creek, Ward Creek Arboretum, final plat. Final plat.
Second.
Okay, we do each one individually?
So, it's all one, all right, well, so. Okay, any further discussion? None, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Thanks.
Okay, item D, consideration discussion, twenty twenty-five fire department. Didn't break the proposed budget, ninety-five to your package. I guess Mr. Beal is here to. Is that the?
All right, we're ready.
We're here, we're ready.
Yep. All right, first of all, we have a number of issues that we have to talk about, and that is, is keeping someone on the district board of elected official. Uh, we've had a number of individuals serve one, two, three, or four meetings, and then all of a sudden resign, leave, or whatever. So I'm hoping now with Jesse that he's gonna stick tight, can communicate with the board. Uh, because I, I feel it a few times I've stopped over and tried to make things happen, and you guys haven't gotten information.
I think I can handle it.
I hope so.
You're stuck with that.
I hope so.
I don't know, I don't, I don't really quit easy.
Good, good. Um, couple of things, is there questions first that I can try to help with, or?
I do have a question.
Sure.
Uh, I, that's a few, uh, what in the two percent dues, can you explain that?
Okay, two percent dues is a reimbursement for insurance.
Okay.
That comes back to the fi- fire department. Um, two percent of the dues for the fire comes back in, and as you can see on the equalized evaluation figures, uh, two percent dues has an impact. Uh, twelve thousand one hundred and eight dollars and seventeen cents for the village.
Right.
The town, uh, and then down through to a total of twenty-nine, three seventy-nine, and that actually comes off the top of the budget.
Okay.
That's revenue that comes back, and the more insurance that's purchased and used, the greater our reimbursement is. Now, we have to be able to meet criteria during fire inspections, during, uh, there are the long laundry list, if you will, but we do end up with two percent of those dues as applied to the, uh, to the budget. Next question.
Brad, why is the villages higher than the towns?
Uh, why is what?
The two percent dues.
Well, that's because there's more insurance.
Oh.
Yeah, that's directly related, but now this year the equalized evaluation, uh, kinda blew my mind because they had a reassessment. And so their equalized evaluation, uh, well, it was here. Three forty, yeah, and, uh, that's a lot because of their reassessment. I think they windshield, I don't know.
Well, if you remember last year, we did a rebound here, and our equalized value jumped super high, so if you had looked at the same chart last year, I think you probably said the same thing about what.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. Uh, regard to budgeting, um, you know, here the the town of New Glarus will pay forty point six eight, five, five percent of the budget. The village pays thirty-eight point oh two four seven, and then the town of Primrose, York, and Perry play of, it's very small, and let's be honest with you, but, uh, out of that budget of, uh, ninety, one thousand five hundred and twenty-five, you have thirty-six plus individuals, all certified firefighters at your disposal twenty-four seven, plus well over a million and a half to two million dollars worth of equipment to be maintained. And if I could get any contracts like that for my business, I'd jump at it for ninety-three thousand dollars. Yeah, I understand there was an issue that came up about the radios. Well, the radios, we were approached that a couple of townships says, we, we don't want this peak and valley. We want to steady it out so that we don't have to have capital input on one year, nothing next. So, we researched it out, and we came up, and I think you got a copy of the loan situation. And, uh, so, that's what we went with, it was a five-year plan for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and that way we got rid of the peaks and the valleys, however, there's a five-year contract, and the length of service of this rental, uh, if you will, rent-to-buy is gonna stretch out at least ten years, if not fifty, in terms of benefit for, uh, our communication. This again was not initiated by the fire department. It was initiated because of the digital conversion of all of the radios, and I know Jeff can, can, uh, solidify that, that they went from an analog system to digital. You couldn't talk to anybody. So what are you gonna do? You can't have somebody in a burning building not being able to communicate with them. Somebody's life's on the line.
So you're saying that, just I don't make sure I understand, so you're paying for them for five years, but they, the lifespan of that will be ten?
At least ten to fifteen.
Okay, so are they considered rented right now?
Uh, no, they're leased all.
Which is why there's also a repair line.
Uh, there is a repair, because most of the repair is not on the radios, but on the pagers. They were paged out on a page, we also had a page out on our phones, and so we try to cover all of that as we can.
So will this be the same amount for the next five years?
Uh, next four years. Yes. And then, the next subject that I think needs to be brought up, I've already talked to Roger, and I've talked to the folks in the administration. We're going to have a truck that's gonna have to be replaced, and, uh, a very similar truck to what we have is currently showing us an estimate of one twenty-two million. And the reason is, is that particular unit was purchased in, uh, two thousand and two, and we hope to get twenty-five years out of that. Now, what deteriorates? The worst thing in the world for a truck is to sit. And we've already replaced tires and so forth, but this is coming down the, down the pipe, I'm sure.
Where does that one point two million dollars come from?
Uh, from the district, through the municipalities.
Okay, Brad, can I ask for that, what equalized value here is that, so like, how do we know what our actual percentage is?
We, we are anticipating of twenty, twenty-seven, oh, it's gonna take at least three years lead time to build, that's another problem. So we're looking at probably delivery late twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight.
So is there a way, and this is just a question coming from the budgeting standpoint, because if that, I mean, saying, well, you're not gonna know exactly what your cost is until twenty-eight, isn't really conducive, so is it a way where we can say, we're gonna base it off of these equalized value numbers?
Right.
Because we're ordering it this year.
Right, and that's, that's where I have prob- problems with it. There's two ways to purchase a truck. You could put an advanced payment of two hundred and four thousand eight seventeen, uh, these are only estimates, there's no, because we've got a bid it out yet, and we want at least three bids. Um, you can upfront two hundred and four thousand, and that'll re- reduce, um, the extended delivery price down to one million twenty-four five. And, uh, I, I, I don't know how I would, you know, determine the actual, what percentage, I would think if you took it the day that you ordered would be as about a fair, but then, when your equalized valuation is going up and down because of reassessments or additions.
Yeah, I guess the reason I ask is because we're gonna have to take this loan, you know, we're gonna have to plan for this loan and fit it into our capital project plan, and, um, so it's really imperative that we know, is it gonna be five hundred thousand, is it gonna be seven hundred thousand? You know?
Yeah.
Um, so that's why we need like kind of a concrete number.
We'll need that, we'll have that once we fit it out.
Okay, and you think that'll happen this year yet?
I.
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna depend on when the delivery, when is so for it.
Yeah.
Um, God only knows, you know?
And you were checking on, uh, the benefit to paying soon.
Yes, yeah, the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To find if it was actually worth it, having to pay the A P R longer.
Yeah, I, I get a little nervous on that upfront money.
Yeah, that's right.
I'd rather pay on the loop.
Yeah.
Well, and for municipalities, we have much more power in terms of money for capital projects, and I mean, coming up with, you know, our portion, let's say, would be, I don't know, it would be eighty thousand based on these numbers, ninety thousand, I mean, that's not, it's much easier for us to fund this through a loan for the full price rather than come up with ninety thousand dollars.
Okay, and I gotta be right up front with.
Yeah.
We have not done that in the past.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it should have been, but it never was, and we always delayed until we got the approval of all in the district, you see, New Glarus was the first fire district in the state of Wisconsin, and it was initially in nineteen sixty-one. Then we renewed it after thirty years, you know, you got the updated contracts. Then we renewed it after thirty years, you know, you got the updated contracts. And I'm gonna have to be very frank with you, some of the requirements in that renewal. Have raised the budget. Now, you had. The uh mandatory certified. Uh uh, what am I gonna say here? Uh certified uh audit.
Audit.
Audit, the audit, the only audit. Well, that's why we have to put five thousand dollars away per year. Because it's gonna cost us fifteen thousand dollars. Minimum to have that complete certified audit. And at the end of five years. Now, I, I never can understand why, because it was all municipal money.
That's exactly why.
You know, no, but I, I look at it and say, you have X number of dollars coming in, you have X number of dollars going out.
Well, I guess that's my next question too, since I, I know you're a wealth of information, so I have lots of questions just on how it works, cause I'm still so new. So let's say the fire department budget's two hundred and forty thousand, but you have a really good year in terms of expenses and you actually only spent two hundred and thirty thousand. Where does that money go?
Okay, that extra money is then put aside into the fund to pay for, and we contribute last. The last truck we put in fifty thousand dollars. Of excess funds into the purchase of that truck.
So we may have some, that one point two million might actually only be one point one million.
Exactly.
And then um is there any discussion in terms of if the, you know, you have money, you put it in that fund and we don't have like a. A long term purchase coming, is there any discussion on the fire department side to say, you know, maybe this next year, since we don't have another capital. Capital project for six years, we can use that towards the operating budget and take a little bit off municipality, or is that solely for capital projects?
Okay, here's the problem. We have got to upgrade our public turnout stuff, you know, you're, you're that. And that's running right now about ten grand a year. And this last year, I think we did seven.
Okay.
So we've got thirty something and it's now mandatory that we have to replace that gear. Because PFFS. Because they'll, they'll look on each particular individual, a piece of equipment. That are basically an expiration date.
And it's ten thousand dollars per person?
Just about, yeah, but they have boots, bunkers.
And how often is this?
Air pack. Uh usually about eight to ten years.
And is it every time we get a new volunteer as well?
Uh no, we try to fit him.
Okay.
As best we can.
You're selective in your choosing, we have, we've got assigned me, I'm here so. Uh one more question, so when we sell old equipment like fire trucks, radios, whatever it is, where does that money go?
Goes right back into our training.
So then that would get used.
Not the fire department, fire district.
So then that gets used towards these purchases.
Now, you need to also be aware of how much the fireman, New Glarus Fire Department. Puts back in through the department. Got any ideas, guys?
No.
Can you tell me? Last year, they spent over fifty thousand dollars to buy a new truck, the pickup truck. So far this year, they paid out eighteen thousand dollars for the new CPR Lucas uh deal. Yeah. Now, that's not district money. That's raised by the department. And put towards, where do you find a bunch of volunteers to raise the money? Turn around and turn it over to the district. Either buy or bid out whatever we got. So if you take this budget and if you figure out what the firemen themselves put into it. If they did not do that, you'd be paying another fifty to seventy five thousand. Now, we built the station addition and how much did that cost the taxpayers?
You tell us. Nothing, nothing.
Not, absolutely nothing, and it was around three hundred and forty seven thousand dollars.
Brad, is there a line on this line, but is this the difference between like total fire department and total or? I, it would just be nice to see like what the fire department contribute to that donation line, you know what I?
Have to have the boy figure it out.
Well, just, I mean, that would clear up a lot of this, you know? Um, I think, I mean, just to, to start off the questions, I think one of the biggest questions from Lauren and I is. You know, we, there's the radio, really truly the radio thing, just because for us, we, that was a twenty thousand dollar jump. From one year to another year, and for us, if we could have put that on the capital side. And, cause it's super hard for us to get more operating revenue versus, and I know you know this. Um, so I guess that's, that's the main thing, you know, where we're seeing the hardship in terms of funding the current numbers, just because it's. Literally twenty thousand dollars more than what we were funding two years ago. And I mean, we got last year, our net new construction number, our increase was eleven thousand dollars. On, you know, I mean, that's nothing, so I think that's where it comes in, so do we have options in, in terms of? Quote unquote fixing the radio issue and taking it off operating.
That I can't answer, okay, that I can't answer, but I'm going to answer.
Okay.
If you wanna go ahead and pay that off, I would not have any objection, but it has to go through the district board. Uh because it was set up on base to the equalized evaluation. Uh is, yeah, you know, we. I, I know what it's like, I got forty one years. Just as a fireman and then I've got, what, Raj, nine years?
Probably at least.
At least nine years on district board. And so there's not a nickel that goes through those books. That isn't accounted for, and now Jesse will find that out.
Yeah, no, I, and I, I don't think it was a. The village doesn't support that or what, I just literally how we buy it, because we just have more spending power to take out a loan, it's just.
I, I haven't got a problem with that, any, anything new now like this truck that's coming down the pipe. Um, yeah, here's, here's the amount, final thing, you borrow, borrow it out.
Yeah.
So I, I haven't got a problem with that.
Yeah.
But up to this point, nobody wanted to use that cattle, they wanted just to keep that budget.
The village told them that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Scary, yeah, no, we definitely want to use it.
Test of that.
I, I don't recall that, I gotta say.
You know, keep it smooth, we don't want more than five.
We, we keep our tax levy smooth in terms of our capital spending, so we don't. That's something that is recent for us in the last three years, is we don't wanna do a huge road project one year and then have absolutely nothing the next year. So that's on the capital side. Operating wise, we really have no control because we can only go up so high. So effectively, to put this in very frank terms, to fund ninety one thousand dollars. Out of operating this year means we are cutting twenty thousand dollars out of police, public works, administration, library. I mean, ju- I mean, that, that is the real, that's the realism of our budget right now. Now, if we can take that twenty thousand dollars off and put it on the capital side. You know, that's a completely different scenario, I think that's where for us. And town accounting and village accounting, it's completely different, village has to do fund accounting, towns operate on cash accounting.
Right.
Which is more the simple in and out, where village is revenue.
See, nobody's ever come up and told them.
Invite me over, Brad, I'd love to.
Nobody has ever said, well, we wanna pay that all up.
Yeah.
Now, Primrose will go and borrow from Dane County.
Okay.
Municipal when we buy a truck. And that just adds on to their indebted.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And all of a sudden, I think they've gotten up to the point where it's.
They can't do anymore?
Yeah, it's getting, I have no concern.
Yeah, no, we are pretty, we're very confident in our ability to manage that, and I think that's where this, that.
It's just a different approach.
Different approach.
And we have to be aware, where's Goff, he was, he's one of the.
Kind of wondering why he wasn't here, I was gonna ask.
Yeah, yeah, I, and he was the representative, and he was the one that was responsible. For us to add on to this budget. The bookkeeping service, the payment of, here's how it worked. The fire district would receive a bill from the fire department. X number of dollars for fireman service. We would write the check to the New Glarus Fire Department. They then would allot out. The amount to each man that he was entitled to, number of runs, number of training sessions, so forth and so on. Well, Goff decided that that wasn't the way that it was gonna be. So then now we fill out W twos, and how do you think that makes everybody happy? And the best part is fourteen out of the thirty six. Were above six hundred dollars, the rest were all under six hundred dollars. Now, think about what money has been spent on bookkeeping.
Pay out that money.
And to pay out that money, so that's all added to the overall budget.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, I will say in Goff's defense. But.
There is no defense.
But in terms of like the audit and, I mean, that really is something. The, like you brought up before, it's municipal audit, that's exactly what we have to do, I mean, unfortunate, it is unfortunate, I hear you, I hear you. You have money that we spend, I mean, the village spends day here fifty thousand dollars a year.
That's right, it's fifteen thousand dollars that no longer can be used for fire service.
Yeah, right, and I, I, we have fifty thousand dollars here that can no longer be used to pay an officer or to pay.
What you're saying is we don't have a choice.
I mean, it's in the contract, yeah.
Okay.
So I'm trying to get it, so what you're saying is you want the village to take out a loan to pay our four years, just in one. Then we can move it to the capital side. It's a two part question, one, yes, they wanna fix that problem because that, it should have never been added on to our operational stuff. But two, as Brad has alluded to, going forward, we now have, I think a lot of the issue was just communication. Right. So now we have that communication that the fire district knows that the village has more spending power if it's a capital project that we can borrow for versus adding it.
Jeff, did you have something?
I just have one quick question, it's the red and blue, I know. Why did the fire department get on board when the county radio project was gone three years ago? When they could give the radios everything for fifty percent off, we couldn't get it on there, we tried and tried and tried. And the sheriff's department shut us out, the radio committee is all, the other ones all got out, no, they didn't all get it, but they gotta push. And we didn't get it, I tell you, Jeff, that was one of the most irritating things that I've gone through. You know, it, it seems that the whole world circles around Monroe. And Monroe, we're holding Monroe City. Uh somehow got in the back door. You know, I, and I look at, okay, your total budget for fire is ninety three thousand. What's your hydrant rent on that? You collect hydrant.
I don't know, top of my head, I'm not sure.
Through your utilities. How much is it?
I don't know. I don't know.
PSC would, would have that.
It's on our utility, I mean, I could go look it up.
Yeah. You know, I'm saying, well, you've got ninety three thousand, if you take even the application of that much. Worth of budget, that's gonna have an impact.
But that's utility dollars, right, yeah, applying utility dollars to the general fund.
Okay.
Yeah. But yeah, municipal financing is incredibly frustrating and budgeting for a municipal government is incredibly frustrating because. You have to fund all of these things with no increase and make everybody happy, it's, it's impossible. So I, I mean, we definitely don't envy the side of the fire district either, because we know that you're not. You're not being irresponsible with the dollars, it's just a communication issue in terms of what works best for both. And I think clearing that up and knowing, okay, like when they have money left over, this is where it goes, like I've never known that. Um, so I think just having that communication, and we have a good communication relationship with chief and um assistant chief over there.
That's something else.
Yeah.
Financial considerations do not go through the chief, that goes to the district.
Mm-hmm.
He's only in charge of firefighting.
Mm-hmm.
And process.
Mm-hmm.
That's another situation that has always been. Try to be squared up because. You, you can't have thirteen people working on a financial situation. And not doing communication.
Right, yeah, I mean, for us, when I came in, Ron Erickson was always the one that sent the fire department budget to me.
Yeah.
Last year, I was told, oh, well, Goff was supposed to get it to you, so I think that's where it got confusing.
All right.
Uh and I'm not saying that, but that's just where we're coming from, where that communication was missed. If you want, so.
I have a couple of questions about the budget.
Yeah.
Um, for the chief line item, how come it doubled from twenty four to twenty five?
Cause he thinks he's worth more. And he puts in a lot of time. I, I, I.
Four thousand, that's a big job.
I was assistant chief for probably almost thirty years. And there's no way in hell I'd do that. For that kind of money.
I see a lot of guys there that want that job.
No, and I'm not saying you shouldn't get, I'm just asking questions, they're saying, oh, but my question is, if we're, if there's a four thousand dollar jump on our budget, does that mean every?
No.
Department in the district is doing a jump for him on there, but.
No, 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 see, that's the total, that's the total, it's not your budget.
That's what I want.
It's the district budget.
And can we assume that if that gets approved, that we won't be seeing a double jump every single, I mean.
I hope they got that.
Who, I mean, obviously, the district takes the input from the municipalities, but like, is there in a district or how does that work? Like, how does? I.
How do you approve?
Like, yes, I, yeah, like, cause otherwise, can't you just put anything on there and just?
Put anything you want, as long as we know that the dollar amount.
Right.
Is within where it should be, now, all that's happening there is he's shifting different line items. To. You know, he's, he's taking a thousand here and a thousand there, moving it off those line items. And then I'll tell you what's gonna very frankly happen, is that the fire department quote. Will step forward and probably purchase some equipment and so forth that we would have taken out of our budget. There's two in, two related individual items here. There, there's the department budget and then there's a district budget. If he, or I, I saw the budget, oh, okay, but I wouldn't do it for not, for anything close to that. Uh well, for instance.
When you say that, you mean, what do you mean? Less or more?
Taking, I don't, yeah, I'm confused.
Okay, what, what do you?
Well, you say you wouldn't do it for that, you mean, he's getting paid not enough or too much?
I think not enough.
Not enough, okay.
You know, especially the rest of the officers, you know, the amount of time they gotta put in. Okay, for instance, one thing here, nobody's come up with this, is LOSA. Okay, do you know what LOSA is?
I don't.
It's length of service award. The village. Pays it uh directly, but it comes from seventy five percent. Paid by the district, twenty five percent paid by the department themselves.
It's a pass through for us.
It, it is, it's a pass through, and that is the only way, basically, we can keep. Someone on that department, knowing that at some point. They will retire and have that LOSA available. As a retiree, now, you ask what I did with mine? I put mine back into the building project. When I retired, five thousand one hundred and some dollars. So.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, there's a lot of thanks. And then I get somebody saying to me. Why do they do that also, to keep people on board?
Makes sense. What's the line above it, training PED Penn funded tripled from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty three?
Okay, that's, that's training, uh a training fund that's off of two percent money. See, two percent money can only be used, yeah, that can only be used for training. And some uh equipment.
Okay. Okay, and one last question, then you're done with me. Uh, so the new truck is twenty twenty seven, so.
Twenty eight, I would say twenty eight realistically.
And that whole truck gets funded by the district. And that whole truck gets funded by the district, like.
Yep.
Okay. Do you guys look at any other potential funding sources to fund that truck?
There aren't any.
Cause I I mean, so I do development grants, these guys are bringing out grants, but just when I did a super fast look. There's a bunch of, there's Homeland Security grant, a DHS grant, FEMA grant.
Lots of luck, you see.
Lots of family. You have anyone that ever worked on that?
Uh, my son made, I don't know how many applications. He probably got one out of five, or one out of seven. We did get, and of course, Washington shut this all down. Uh, we got a grant for our air packs. Originally way back when. Kent got that through. Then the following three years later or four. We got a grant for turnout gear. That's why now our turnout gear is running. Out of uh, out of date. So, yeah, we'll take anything we can get.
Yeah, I'm just curious when there's three or four years here.
The only guys that I know are ever come out on that. They got the station and they got um the equipment on a rural grant.
There's a lot of thirty, it needs to be good to look.
Well, need to find it. Oh, the brewery's been wonderful to us. The brewery actually put in twenty thousand dollars for that radio. Uh, situation and then to the department, then the department turned it over to us.
How much for the radios overall?
Hundred and sixty. Some thousand. Was even more than that. I haven't got it with me.
Brad, I also noticed that the annual payment on the radios was twenty nine thousand, but the budget number's twenty five.
Because of this, it made up the difference. That was the last thought we had.
I just say this would be part of the budget that you you guys will be approving in November. Um, so this was.
Preliminary?
No, I mean preliminary in terms of this gave us a chance to get our questions answered and to have this stuff considered. I mean, I do think the radio thing has to be solved because. Realistically, I don't know how we found this with operating dollars without making major cuts to something else.
Well, I don't see why we wouldn't anyway, right? Why 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 we wouldn't just put it on the capital side.
Well, we have, but because there's our, this was already purchased, we have to make sure that we can with the Bank of New Blairs, this is who you have here. Um, and do you guys get bids for that from like all the local banks and you just take the lowest one?
It was Woodford and U B and T at that time.
So we we basically just need to know from the Bank of New Blairs. And the district, what our amount is. First of all, can we do it? And second of all, what our amount is because we have to put that on our C I P for next year.
And then we'll have to figure out a way to minus that out of. This.
Yeah, but this equalized value will have to be re-formatted to take out our portion of the radios.
And it won't fully solve the issue because the audit and.
Yep.
Costs for firefighters.
Right, so. Right.
Twenty grand, right.
But I think it's important. This is going to be, this radio cost is going to be here for the next four years, correct?
Uh, yes.
So I mean, if we can get it taken care of now, that eliminates this cost for the next four years, I mean. So I think that that's, and now that we have that discussion.
And that and that's actually been a dirty word capital. Yeah, it's honest to God, we don't want, although we don't want this spite, we want. Things to go easy, four percent and there was times when our budget was only up one and a half, two percent. We had to follow through with.
So the next step with that is somebody had to talk to Peggy Glares.
Yes, I've reached out and I think I should probably attend the next fire district.
Yes, I was gonna say, we need a. One of you to come to the district and say, okay, let's reformat this.
Yeah.
And uh, which is is not a, I don't think it's a monumental thing. Should be able to done. Yeah, it's just a bookkeeping.
Yeah.
Thing.
Okay.
One of the things I thought to, and I I'll be honest with you, I wanted. But I thought the village could act as the paying agent. For the W two's and that, but then they decided it was supposed to go to a private individual. Or a private company or. Auditors or whatever and. Cause I thought here here you've got everything set up as far as W two's.
If it was solely village, I think that would have been, uh, but since it's not just the village, we take on liability for all these other municipalities that we've known.
Well, but. You know, you got X number of dollars that uh. In our panel going through your hands. And and to me, that's. You know, it isn't significant. So like I say, I wish I could get thirty six guys working for me and. Two million dollars worth of equipment for ninety three thousand a year. You know?
Okay.
Okay. Anything else I'm gonna?
No, what we'll need is a resolution when you adopt the budget to be sent, so.
Yep. Yep, no, I will send the same thing that we do every year. Uh, we're adopting the budget as of right now at the second meeting in November, so. As soon as I've adopted, I'll send that over to. If you wanted to go directly to Ron or if I you want us to work through you and Jesse, however.
However you want to do it. See. Normally, the elected representative would communicate with the board. I'm the ad hoc appointed representative. And if he's not available, then I would. That's, you know, that's why I wouldn't ask, can you come? Yeah, I can come here.
I'll see you at the next meeting.
I hope so. Take care.
You too.
Thanks, Brad. Uh, item A, consideration discussion cemetery committee update.
Yeah. And since this meeting is long enough. Lauren has put what I was going to tell you, you know, in the agenda on page two. And I'll, I can give you a financial update that some meeting in the future that isn't quite so packed. Okay. But it's it's going well with me, you were. And Lauren's helping a lot.
There's one thing, oh, guys, that I needed to mention it to. The other day, there's a limb. Up in that pine tree. At the corner across from the museum. It's just hanging there.
Yeah, I think the limb broke off there.
Yes.
There's another one?
Yeah, and I think your guys need to take a look at it for somebody to take.
I think Scott's jotting it down right now.
Okay, I wanted to not run off the door and I'll see if you have you said seven.
Okay, item F, consideration discussion twenty five to twenty twenty nine capital improvement plan, page ninety nine.
Right. Um, so an updated draft of the C I Ps included on page ninety nine. I apologize, it's tiny. I was kind of hoping it prints the other way. Um, and then on the next pages, I have a memo uh that kind of updates you all. So a couple of updates to twenty twenty five. As Larry's update on the cemetery alluded to, the the committee has discussed. Uh, borrowing funds next year to establish an endowment for the cemetery. That would basically fund operations in perpetuity. I think this is obviously not a fun thing to have in your C I P. We have lots of priorities. Um, but if the village is going to take on the cemetery, which it's looking very likely that we will. This is really the only way that long term we can fund the operations and maintenance of the cemetery. Um, the Swiss church will be giving us around a hundred thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, so you know, in the short term, yeah, we could just use that money and operate it, but. Ten fifteen years down the road, that money runs out and how are we funding the operations when? You know, who knows what our property taxes are looking. So this is really a long term solution to addressing that. So you'll see in twenty twenty five, I've included a two hundred thousand dollar investment in this cemetery endowment. Um, the total amount would be three hundred thousand dollars going into the endowment. Um, that's factoring in a hundred thousand dollars coming from the Swiss church. We left out some of the funds so that I said it was a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty they're giving us. We want to leave some out in a separate cemetery fund in case there's, you know, an emergency that we need to spend more than what the endowment is putting out. Um, you know, just to have extra money and then that. That fund will grow as well, you know, from interest, but then also uh when we collect revenue from cemetery plot sales. That would give you like what, twelve thousand a year?
It would give us. Have to do, forget exactly what.
And then plot, the average for plots per year was figured out, actually, the last six years has been six thousand seven hundred. But three thousand is what. Estimate we've put.
Yeah, it really goes up and down, so you can't rely on it too much.
So what would come out of this endowment every yearly? What's the yearly?
Twelve, twelve thousand.
That's all it's gonna cost a year to.
Complete cost is about fourteen a year. That includes mowing, snow removal. Everything, basically.
Wow.
Yeah, it's not expensive.
Wasn't the last uh contract with worth fourteen and change?
Nope, I took the costs of uh this year and last year and factored in some additional. You know, growth and that, and I forget what the number was. I. I should have included the memo I've been giving to the cemetery committee, but it was. Not not anywhere near there.
Oh.
It was only. I I would have to look at it again, but yeah, that is the biggest cost, but. So where did the money come from? It's going in the endowment?
Here's what she.
A hundred thousand from Swiss church, a hundred thousand from the village borrowing.
Okay.
According to this C I P.
So the mowing sixty three hundred.
Oh, is that one of them? Oh, you got it. Perfect. Yeah.
Swear that I. Okay.
And I'm assuming that. The village and the Swiss church are the only two entities that are willing to put any money towards. Um, that could change. Um, the town declined to put somebody on the committee, so I don't feel hopeful that.
Yeah.
You're getting any funds from them. We have, we just added a another church representative. And so we have talked about, well, maybe the churches would come together and maybe give some kind of contribution. Um, but I imagine that will be minimal, but we can always update the amount we borrow based on if we get additional.
Who's the church representative?
Uh, Sally Neelis from.
Yep, the water.
Well, yes, but what church does Sally go to? The Shepherd of the Hills, I think.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so moving on from cemetery, unless people have more cemetery questions. We can come back to it too, but I just want to highlight all the other twenty five projects. Uh, cause that's really what we're trying to nail down as soon as possible. Um, so the other. Twenty five projects include replacing the police department's roof. Um, replacing a squad car for the police department and then the design of eleventh Ave. Um, street project. Those are the general fund borrowing with a little bit of utility for design. And then I also have a downtown streetscape project that would be funded in basically cash from TID four. Um, and that's been kind of in discussion for a long time. We have. Uh, really deteriorated bricks downtown that we love to replace. We've talked about getting like a stamped concrete instead, which would be much more. Manageable, um, obviously maybe less. I don't know, historic looking. We can work through the details on that. Um, but I'm also looking at a grant opportunity. The. Um, Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation just came out with a grant. I forget what it's called. They used to do it and they stopped for a while, but it's all about like downtown. Teen development type projects. Um, so I will try to apply for some grant funding to do that as well, but. That would not be a borrowing project. That would be a TID project.
And the streetscape is what? Is it parking areas or or curb areas?
Sidewalk and so like anything basically in the pedestrian area. Yeah.
And so every time the tent goes in for a festival. It makes us nervous.
Well, just like the trees, like where the terrace trees are there, like some of those graves.
Permanent hooks of some kind. Yeah, that would make so much more sense.
Yeah, we have to, yeah, I would love to do that, but we have to maybe. Get our minds together on what that looks like because the tent posts aren't really close together and there are a lot of them and so. We have a bunch of posts downtown, that's not.
Make it look like or make it also function as a bike rack, something like that, so it wouldn't just be a post in the middle. It would have some some other function. Yeah.
Tourists are running to and then watching.
Right.
Anyway, okay, thank you.
I have a question, I forgot.
Um, so that's twenty five and I won't go through every single project. People have questions on the outer years. I'm happy to answer. Um, I mostly left it the same, except I did take out. The public works garage and I moved it from twenty five to twenty six. Um, just with, you know, doing the cemetery endowment and needing a PD roof replacement, we just could not afford it in that year. Um, so what I did was I put it in twenty six and unfortunately I had to reduce village hall renovation. I changed it to improvements because we only have a million dollars, so I'm not exactly sure what that's gonna buy us, but.
Get some new paint.
Um, so, um, yeah, that's that's where it's at now. Um, I included the report on the public works garage in the packet because I did have somebody take a look at the roof.
Yeah.
Um, they quoted me at, I think it was. Fifty nine or some thousand dollars to do the roof. Sixty thousand, um. And I guess I don't know if it's worth it when we know the whole building is kind of bad.
I'm sorry, what were you talking about again?
Uh, I'm talking about the public works garage. I included a report from a roofer on its. Condition and what they would recommend for.
The main structure is okay, but all the.
We could probably swing for any sign out front too.
One oh eight, one oh nine.
So there the roofer recommended replacing all the purlins, which is like the wood, you know, structure underneath the roof. And then.
Trusses?
Yeah, what the roof actually lays on.
And then also putting a coating over top of the panels. Uh, but they also have, you know, they also say like, we also don't, we're gonna find, we start this project and there could be additional decay. And I would not be surprised if that's the case because this. Years and I'm sure there's a lot of. Not good things going on in there. Um, so. Jesse will do it for a half.
What was the total? Did it give you?
Yeah, it was about sixty thousand.
As long as somebody buys a flex seal, I'll do it.
Let's do it with the kid, he'll be fine.
Um, the problem though is doing, you know, like a seal is that still the underneath is all.
Yeah, like putting silicone over the leaky spot that seems. Forty thousand to put silicone over those.
What you're saying is we can either do the roof now. Or not do the roof and replace the building in twenty twenty six. Is that what you're thinking?
I, if we do the roof in twenty five, we have to take something else out of twenty five because we can't afford to do that.
If we're gonna rebuild the building though, why would you do the roof?
Well, it would come out, that would. We probably wouldn't redo the building.
Right.
Anytime soon if we did the roof.
Or settle by us in time.
Yeah.
It would, but the building itself, I mean. It would, but the building itself, I mean, is not great either. It, it would probably. Be standing, but I don't know probably.
We've gotten this like rotation with like village buildings where, like we see this with PD, right? So we stuck all of this money into like doing this beautiful new police department, like state of the art. It's amazing, except for when it rains or when snow melts, because then the roof leaks and it gets on all of the equipment that we just spent millions of dollars on. So it's like this whole thing, it's like this whole thing of like, we get so close to actually doing. Like fixing things as they need be fixed, but it's just not quite all the way there, we just like put Band-Aids on things. And then five years down the road, we're like, oh my gosh, why did we do that, why don't we just do the roof, you know, so like that's my. Well, my concern with the public works building is that we're gonna put this Band-Aid on and it's gonna work for. A handful of years and then we're gonna be having the same discussion because one of the sizes now, I don't.
What do you wanna do?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I want the Taj Mahal village hall, no, I'm just kidding. Um, I mean, I, that's, that's your decision of what you want to do, but I just, I, I think history has shown us what happens when we keep putting fancy things on things.
Right, but what is the thing that you would say to do?
I think Scott can figure it out.
So you're saying you don't wanna fix, you don't wanna put a Band-Aid on it?
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying consider what that, we have, we have a history of doing that.
That's what I'm asking you, it's like, give me one recommendation that you do think.
I would say it's probably better to do how I have it written here, which is wait until twenty six and replace the entire building. But we run the risk of waiting another year and having a roof that's leaking.
Yeah, but it's not gonna fall down.
And also, we run the risk of having possible, I mean, I don't know.
So what's the building cost?
Well, I can tell you what it is now, but that doesn't mean that's what it's gonna be in twenty six, you know? I mean, it's.
We got it quoted at five hundred grand, but that was to add another bay, I don't think that's a necessity. So I kept it at five hundred grand by twenty twenty six, I'm guessing that's, I mean, this is like a Cleary building quote that I got. So I'm guessing that's probably around what it would cost.
Um, okay, so. My uh interpretation of this would be to not do anything and buy the building. When it's time to buy the building. Because the, this is a steel roof, it's not gonna collapse, right? So your building.
My only question too on the rope is, when we talk about the Band-Aid, why wasn't it fixed twenty years ago when it was leaked?
Well, that's my whole point with this.
Or what, what are you talking about the?
This garage.
The garage, I mean, the police department needs to stay super sometime too, but I'm just talking to garage down there. If we don't delete since Scott Jelli is the director, why was it never a rap?
I feel like maybe I was the first one to get Richard to look at us, honestly.
But do you need any like movements on this, are we just talking about it tonight?
So the, the C I P, the C I P is a, is a planning. You know, so, so. I think the decision here is figuring out what the twenty five projects are and really nailing those down and then. That also impacts the outer years, for example, if we are feeling good about leaving the new public works garage in twenty six. Then we don't have to figure out what to do with it in twenty five.
Yes.
Um, then obviously that has the decreases.
Remember that only the first year is in stone.
And the other important thing with next year that we kind of alluded to at the beginning of the meeting is the squad cars on here. Um, and if technically the budget's not final until that November sixteenth meeting. But if the board feels competent about giving a quarter of that, then we could order that squad and get it sooner.
Boy, I, I figure squad would be a hundred thousand.
Not this year, Larry.
Wow, that's a lot cheaper than I figured.
That's what I said.
You gotta reuse some of the stuff this next one, we gotta get a new. Overhead light bar and stuff, so it'll, it'll be, you know, around that area.
I think you should upgrade to a different car.
Okay.
Like a faster one.
Can I highlight one more thing?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So in the memo, right, uh, on page one hundred, one oh one. This digs into the impact on the property taxes uh for this plan. Um, so you'll see on page one oh one, I have a table here. Um, we talked at the last meeting about how we have a debt service fund, you can apply. To help keep the levy increases at a stable fifty thousand dollars. So I did get Jamie, I got the, what that is an impact on a tax bill, so I got um. Changed the tax bill on a three hundred thousand dollar home is fifty three dollars. Um, so you see on that for this right column, how the total tax bill, bill increases around fifty three dollars each year. Um, so yeah, and, and um. The other thing I wanna highlight is this current plan. Um, would hit our debt policy limit in twenty twenty nine, it actually wouldn't exceed it up to seventy seven percent. Um, it's not a huge issue right now because it's so far out, it's in twenty nine. Uh, and this assumes a two percent growth each year, um, just knowing some of the developments that are on the horizon. Um, I think we will probably exceed two percent, but if we don't, we can keep an eye on it and down the road, we can. Um, adjust the plan. I think it's hard to really predict what people are gonna look like in twenty twenty nine, so. I think for now it's fine to leave it as is and then might have to make adjustments, uh, because we will review this every year, so.
Well, if you have to recalibrate this again, if you're gonna put that radios in the C I P, the wireless.
Yeah, but it'll be very, it'll be a very small amount.
Can we get a three wheeled one?
Honestly, if I won this. We're under the limit.
We'll be fine, we'll make it work, it's better than having it, if, if that stays as it is, we will be cutting twenty thousand dollars out of this.
That's the uh, well, and also.
I'm sorry, but.
Yeah, I don't, I have to, I thought it was like the beginning, because wasn't nine only done?
And we would do that after we do rail road, yeah.
One of the things I just wanna say really quick, um, so when I was at the fireboard meeting. Um, I asked if they checked with multiple banks. Because there's apparently a guy from Perry that works at the Bank of the Glares. And they said, oh, no, no, we don't do that, otherwise Skyler was his name, would get mad. But then he just said that they checked multiple banks. That's not true, or I was lied to here, or I was lied to here. I, I'm gonna tell you guys right now, I, I am not great at budget stuff because I don't really understand some of it. But when it comes to talking to people and like making them listen to me, I can do that, it's just.
What can be talking about?
Some of that was strange, so I just wanna say, I did ask that question because you always check and you don't just use local. Because it's tax mayor, it's Ted's here, what? Because I was thinking that maybe I was wrong, but now I'm thinking about it. And the entire room was there when I, everybody was in that when I said that. And they said Scott wouldn't like that, and I was like, who's Scott? It's the guy with painted fingernails.
I will say, Jesse, the one thing like we need from you on this is just like if they give you anything like. Get on your horse and ride it to my house and drop, I mean, we need like, is that, that's.
Is that, or is that not what I did?
No, I.
That's what I will do. I have other fire department guys that are testing me, saying they wanna talk to me too. Not, not, not district guys, department guys, so.
Do we have any pushback on that budget, like, do we go and say?
And who determines how the raise works? It doesn't sound like anybody, that's not how you get to. It's a, it's a.
We have control over our portion of it, so we don't, obviously can't say like you need to increase everybody's and.
The, the thing that they have argued to me is that we have the one village board member representing us. And the rest of, if the rest of them vote for it, we basically, I mean, that's how they, they said it to me. Which is really frustrating, what do you mean?
But they need an approved resolution from us, that's in the, in the agreement, and I agree, I, Lauren is correct, she's absolutely, it's like a peer pressure thing, right? Like, everybody else is doing it, but at the end of the day, they need a resolution from the village saying, we agree to pay you ninety some thousand dollars. And this is kind of where all this stemmed from at the beginning for us, is we're not advocating to cut or increase or do any of that, all we're saying is they should. This just needs to be discussed like any other department, yeah, that's it. And I think the radio thing was a huge obstacle.
But even so, we're not pushing back on it, we're looking for a different way to pay for it.
Right, on the radio thing, but I, yes, you're correct on that, and I'm not saying you shouldn't push back or do whatever, I'm just saying getting that off of there and really knowing what is your actual. Is that not, that's capital.
Those are expensive radios.
And that's a big raise.
Maybe they put it in there on purpose so that we can push back and feel good about ourselves and.
It doesn't seem like they think that part of it.
I, and for the record, our financial advisor said they absolutely should have talked to you before taking out any loan like that. It actually says that they have to against statute, um, that they have to have.
Did you throw that to them and that, when you met with them?
I, I mentioned it in my email, but. Lauren and I have tried extremely hard to communicate well and professional, extremely, like we've gone to meetings, we were at a meeting. We've, we have really tried, um.
Thank you, thank you, thank.
Seems to be, that wasn't.
When's the last time you were at a meeting?
Um, we went to one, huh? Um, the one we were both at was last year's about the audit, um. And.
The one he's complaining about for fifteen.
Yes, and. Right, I mean, it's. None of this is stuff that we're like, yes, we can't wait to spend more money on this, like I don't wanna have to do W two either, but I have to. I mean, I have to.
And I have to fill one out for being on that board.
Right.
So what does it matter?
Other things we wanna do.
Okay.
So just, so you know, that audit issue came down from our village attorney. It's a public entity and he said they need to be audited, it's just like we're audited every year. Well, he thinks fifteen thousand is banned for an audit.
We pay fifty.
I'm not sure if he understood that, I know you repeated it, but I don't think he did, but don't think, I don't think he cares.
Have you got any feedbacks and just curious about what God thinks of this budget? Uh, C I P, no, the fire budget, I, has he seen it?
I was gonna call him, but then I decided not to.
What?
I was waiting for somebody to say something.
Uh, is there anything more on this capital improvement plan?
Oh, so do you want a motion or something that we move forward with? Yes, I would.
I moved, I moved to approve the capital improve, improvement plan for twenty twenty five to twenty twenty nine.
Second.
And then do you want anything?
From twenty five to twenty nine?
Well, the C I P, so you're, you're for sure approving twenty five, but it will come back to you in the budget process.
Okay.
But the rest is a plan. Yeah, so that's something we wanted to clarify, are you comfortable with us putting the squad car on order, is that ordering the squad car? But if we don't, if we wait till after the budget, it'll be November sixteen.
Just to see what it's actually, that order of the cars can be, because it can take six, eight, nine months, a year, yeah.
So you're gonna amend your motion.
So you only, you, the only price you get is from.
For twenty twenty five.
They'll eat some money just so they can. But, could you, would it, the same thing, or if we went to the. The state bids, the way the ordinance I understand back then, since it's a state that we don't have to go out. We usually have to go outside to like send in from places, does sit in here and open a mall.
Got it, okay.
So, do you, we need Larry to amend his.
Well, do you want a separate motion that they're comfortable or how, or are you just?
Either way, yeah, well, you can amend it saying you approve the C I P and you approve ordering the squad.
Getting bids for the squad.
Well, isn't that in here?
If that twenty five budget uh won't be approved until November in our official budget. And so in order to start that process earlier, we could say staff are allowed to go. Start that bidding process now, basically saying you're not gonna pull the squad car from next year's C I P.
Can that be a separate motion?
Yeah, thank you.
I, I want, I just wanna prove this plan in my motion.
Okay, then I move to.
Um, we gotta have a second.
Oh, sorry.
We have a second.
We have a second, okay. Now we need another motion to direct Jeff to go out to bids for the squad car.
I have motion to allow Jeff to get bids for squad cars.
Can I, sorry to ask this as well, could I add the roof as well?
For bids?
Bids for the roof, that's gonna take a while too.
Oh, you need for his roof?
Yeah.
Yes.
No, no, the.
To allow staff to bid for squad car and PD roof.
Second, okay, all the papers say hi. Uh, I appreciate consideration of such a twenty twenty four mill overlay contract, page one hundred and.
Um, so the village received an L R I F grant for eighteen thousand dollars to do some milling overlay in the village, which is great. Um, I put out bids for this. Um, and received two bids from um Rock Road and Paint and Dolan. Unfortunately, Green County forgot to bid on it.
And later, it'd be the cheapest.
Yeah, so I was. I could, but then we're gonna run out of time. Yeah, we have to spend it this year. I could double check on that, I guess, I haven't verified that, but I assumed it was this year kind of.
So you mean like Chris forgot?
Yes.
Cool. I will say that you probably come in the cheapest, but I also will say that. It's not, I don't know if they're gonna have time for us. Because we've got so many jobs right now that they're doing. They might, I mean, you can check with them and see, but.
The problem is you can check with them and see, but it doesn't matter, he could say he's gonna do it and then full waiting still.
There's also a policy um that they have to be at least ten percent cheaper, if they're not, we have to take a contractor. Um, so keep that in mind, I, I guess, I apologize, I did not check to see if we could move the money to next year, it's been a headache. Because Green County also didn't tell us that we needed to submit paperwork online, they told me that it was taken care of. And so we were actually late in submitting our paperwork and we got like a slap on the wrist from the state saying. We're gonna make an exception for you and give you this money, but really this should have been turned in in January. Been such a frustrating process.
If it's already that frustrating, I don't think we should try to use them though.
Does the grant cover the whole amount of these?
No, so it, it's, it's a fifty percent grant. It's a fifty percent grant, and so we had budgeted thirty six thousand dollars. Of our street construction budget to do this, bid came in at forty eight thousand. So what staff and I were kind of working through is why don't we just take off one of the segments and only do two segments? That will take away a third of the cost and then we can afford it. The other option is, you know, we could, we have some additional dollars in the snow budget and we could.
Well, as of right now.
As of right now, so that's a risky proposition because who knows what November looks like. Um, so what the, I guess, what you are approving today is just move forward with the Paint and Dolan contract. At the twenty fifty per square yard price. And staff can figure out the scope and whether that fits in our operational budget, likely we'll cut out a segment, um. But how the contract raises per square yard, so we don't have to get tied into a total project cost now.
Okay. So you need a motion to approve the overlay contract?
Yes.
I motion to approve the overlay contract.
Check.
All the papers say aye?
Aye, aye.
Those, most carries, item eight consideration discussion twenty twenty-four goals update.
This is an update on our goals. Any questions, I don't have to go through it. I guess my one, um, comment would be, been reading through this, start thinking about what our twenty twenty-five goals might be.
Can we try to see what it would cost to pay someone to just like look into grants and stuff? Kind of like do what Jamie does for a living, except not just name, name, Jamie do it, I feel like there's all these things out there. There seems like a lot of money floating around so that we can get. Am I wrong?
You're not, but like, where's that money gonna come?
I know.
You're not, but there's so much out there for that fire truck, I wanted to jump across the table, like I found five just with a quick look and I would do a. Deep search if I was actually doing the job, so.
Jamie, does that ever work in like, kind of like a sales job where it's like commission days where it's like, you don't get a good writer that way?
Well, shoot. Plus, you, that could hurt you if you did like five percent and they got you a million dollars.
Yeah, but if they got you a million dollars, you.
No, you'd still care, you think you wouldn't care, but you care.
I'll take a million five.
But we're that kind of person, if we could find money for it, and there are actually grants you can write, community vision funds and things that fund roles for that. Where that would be helpful is like fundraising for multiple things, so they could also do fundraising for the library, they could do other pieces, not just grant writing, if it was more spent up development. Did the county end up hiring a grant writer? We talked about doing that when they got all the ARPA money.
They created a fund to help fund municipalities to hire grant writers, so we actually used that for the library.
Great, oh, okay, yeah.
I just feel like there's. There's gotta be better ways for some of this, and I feel like if somebody was sitting there looking for them, looking for grants for some of this stuff, it would save us so much money. If, you know, I mean, if, if you can get them, like when Jamie started talking about him, when she started on the board, I'm like. There's so many out there, um.
That Jamie, that you think we have a very solid chance of getting. I mean, just from, yes, I mean, just first personally looks, I mean, I think what did we do in the library? Thirty potential grants that they're working on now, then they're dividing up to see if they can offset some of that cost. But, and that was just with the, you know, one hour cursory look, but I, I do think if you diversify and it was more overall development scope, they could help you a lot in fundraising for. Different things, and it wouldn't just have to be like, oh, we should go to the brewery and look for this, or we should go to the workers' cares and have them on board, then we could. You know.
Could we do like a contract with someone and say this is the amount of money we have, like, go apply for as many grants for?
Yeah, you could, and you could do a three month temporary, you know, whatever hours a week that is for the money, figure it out. And see what the impact is, you know, of having someone do that for three or six months.
If the board was interested in something like that, we, we have surplus funds that can potentially.
For.
Yeah.
Some of that.
Do you, who's the best one you know? I'll take you.
I knew you were gonna say that, yeah, I could give you some names for sure, the absolute best one I know would be Remote, she is in. Medicaid, she's the best one I know, but I think if. I mean, I don't know, I mean, I think if there are surplus funds and other things, right, a second.
I mean, I would just say that I think we need to approve this budget before we allot, just because.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying.
I think you're a hundred percent, really, I think going forward to be the twenty twenty-five is a great idea.
There's also, there's so much shit going on all the time, there's no way that you can. Focus on any one thing, I don't understand how you guys.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, cause part of my job is supposed to be writing grants. And I was gonna say that, but.
And she does write.
I, I try to write grants, but yeah.
But our, we'll be having someone do the meat of the grant and you editing finalize it.
Right, that would like, great, it's a high level piece, would be way more impactful than you writing the grant, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But yes, if you guys wanna explore that at some point, I'm happy to. Talk before I know it, write a JavaScript document, that's like, for sure.
Cool. Okay.
Ready to move on?
Yep.
Okay, personnel and finance, uh, consideration discussion overtime policy. Lauren?
So tired of this one. No, um, sixteenth time with this one. Okay, page one twenty-seven, I have a memo, um. I think some of you have already kind of overheard this discussion in personnel and finance, so. Uh, basically, our personnel handbook has a very big policy on overtime, um, specifically what should be considered. As part of overtime and what shouldn't. Um, we've kind of operated on a twenty-four hour clock, basically meaning if you work more than eight hours in a day, you get overtime. Uh, but that's not really written in our policy and it doesn't tell you what to do if you take some sick time that day, does that count towards that eight hours or? Does it not? Um, so, uh, Goff had asked me about how much are we spending on overtime, so I did. Put together those numbers, you can see, I just looked at public works, um, because I think we're most concerned about general fund dollars. Um, so you can see what we budget versus what we spend, um. We usually spend more than what is budgeted, but there's a lot of factors that go into it, there are some years where we have vacancies. And so we're spending less in regular wages, but more in overtime, we have never been over a general fund budget that I know of, ever.
And the person that set that overtime budget was?
What do you mean?
Well, who's, who's the person that said it was ten thousand four hundred eighty in twenty nineteen and it actually was eighteen seven?
Um, we work with directors of the departments to.
Right. So that was.
I will say, yeah, it's very hard, because a lot of public works is snow, that's a lot of the overtime and some years is nothing. Yeah, but like I, I think the big key that Lauren alluded to in this is just because it says that we spent eighteen, we only limited ten, does not mean we were over budget. It usually means like for last year and twenty twenty-two, we had multiple vacancies or employees that were out with an injury. That we ended up having to fill. So that is.
We had more snow than.
Or we have more snow. Which you don't wanna all budget for worst case scenario, especially in snow, right? Um, most municipalities will budget on, kind of on the more conservative side, I guess maybe less conservative. Less money and just kind of if it's a big snow year, you're pulling into contingency or, you know, other options.
And a lot of this is management, is supervisor management, like, there are some times that overtime is unavoidable, but there are a lot of times that overtime hits. And it really is up to the department heads to manage that, and then obviously Lauren and Port, but, um, that's, and it's not a hard thing to do if you are organized and know. Who's working where.
All right, let's dive into the policy.
Oh, do we have to do that, I'm sorry.
I'm ready to, it looks fine.
Okay, yeah. Um, yeah, so this creates an eight hour, typical eight hour work, work day. If you work over eight hours, you are eligible for overtime, however, if it's a holiday, if you take vacation, you take sick leave or any other. Leave that day, it does not count towards overtime, so for example.
Good shower you work.
So if I work, um.
Well, holiday is different, holiday, you get holiday pay for how we.
Correct, but it's not like, if, if you come in on a holiday, you're not getting eight hours plus.
Yeah, exactly, you got it.
Um, so for example, if I, um, work.
I can give an example.
So many times.
So, so here's a common one that comes up, so Tuesday nights, I, when I have board meetings, if I would have taken a vacation day today. And then I came in tonight for the meeting, I'm not getting overtime for being here tonight, I'm just taking less vacation time. So instead of taking eight hours of vacation for day, today I'm only taking five and a half or however much time I put in here. But let's say I take a vacation day yesterday, but then today I work my normal eight hours, come in tonight to the meeting, I'm going to get overtime today. Because I worked eight hours today.
Yeah.
You are looking at individual days.
Instead of the week.
Yes, you have to get your forty hours in and Lauren added it to included clause, because we have departments here that work not just Monday through Friday, there's some Saturdays. Sundays, et cetera, um, but it's set by the supervisor, but you have to get forty hours in in a pay period. But the, the true thing that we're looking at is the snapshot in terms of overtime of the day.
Sure, does that make sense?
Sure. It does, but I don't see why it matters, if you're working, so if you work eight hours this day and the next day you work. Ten hours, but you only work forty hours for the week, you still get overtime for that ten hour day?
Well, if you're factoring in vacation time, because obviously you'd have, if you, I, you have to come up with forty hours, whether that's your actual hours working, vacation, sick, et cetera.
Okay.
So.
What, you work over your scheduled time in a one.
In a one day period, so I could take the rest of the week off on vacation and I'm still gonna get overtime for tonight, because I actually worked eight hours today.
And the vacation time makes up the other forty hours.
Why do they do that instead of just?
Well, that was kind of the discussion that went to the committee prior.
And they chose this way?
Um, we recommend it this way because this is how we've kind of been doing it, and it's actually on the much more generous side than. A lot of policies are actual hours only and it's until you hit the forty hour, which really. Which really stinks in certain situations, like if you have a funeral, or if it's a paid holiday, like Labor Day, for example, and we had a meeting the next day. Because it was a paid holiday and the village told me that we are closed and you can't come to work, I had to work eleven hours on Tuesday and I'm not gonna actually get any overtime.
Okay, so you're happy with the way this is.
Yep.
Most, you approve the overtime policy.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Thank you for your sixteen explanation.
President's report, consideration discussion committee question, I think we'll move that on or back up to. We need a motion to accept or appoint back to public works.
I motion to approve back at the public works and public safety.
Jamie, you second it?
Yes.
Okay, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Those, most carries, is there anything else on the board?
No.
We're adjourned.
Sweet.
At Wednesday. Okay, good job.
I did, I do have this if you ever need. But I'm with Lauren too.